It's locked in. That's my point against it.
Well, maybe this is one of those items like nonpartisan elections that we really need to let the voters because there's a lot of chatter out there about term limits. And I don't mean just town council. I'm talking about at the state level, the town level. We know the federal level. But, you know, I think we're not giving the voter enough credit that this is not complicated. This is an up or down, yes or no, do you on term limits? It's not like the manager and the finance issue last time, which kind of very much it confused a lot of people. I think this is one of those things that, you know, it wasn't entered into lightly by the commission. And this is a, just like nonpartisan elections, this is something the voters need to be able to decide on.
I would prefer the general assembly is that in? Or state rep positions, state senate positions?
That won't happen in Rhode Island though.
Right, right.
But we could make it forward thinking in Coventry. I say we put it to the people.
One more thing to vote on. You know, you've got your lottery list and you can look down 11. I think it's just a little bit overwhelming.
But this is a point. No, they can choose not to answer those questions or vote for them.
You can, that's true.
I'd say put it on there and let the voters decide.
We're not letting the voters vote on it.
Well, you could put them all on, let the voters vote on everything. But that's not, that's not the idea of a charter commission as far as I know since the past thirty-five years. Is that they make recommendations, the council decides which one they want to put on. And it could be all of them, it could be none of them. We could come up, as Mr. Gorman mentioned to me, we could add our own if we wanted to and have the wording done. Is that correct, Mr. Gorman? I mean, if the council chooses to?
I believe that the charter is good.
Right, charter.
The Rhode Island constitution both are good.
I read it well. Thank you very much.
I think it's self-serving not to put it out there for the people.
I understand your opinion.
Especially as we're elected people. It's our, it's self-serving to us to say, oh, God, we don't want to have term limits because we want to be here forever.
Sometimes you have, again.
Let the people decide.
Common sense goes a long way as to how many you're going to put on for the people, whether they even understand what they're reading.
Oh, my God. How discriminatory.
How do you feel, do you want to?
Do they understand what they're reading?
Yes, because a lot of times that's charter changes they did.
Yeah, well, it all boils down to how they're written. You are written correctly. And this is pretty easily written.
Well, I don't mind letting everybody vote on everything, but I.
I make a motion to pass this recommendation. I second it.
Nice applause, not that it's been voted on yet. Motion made and seconded. All right, how do we, how do we vote?
Aye, aye.
Mr. LaBosnier?
Nay.
Mr. McGee?
Nay.
And I'd say nay too.
The logic is the line.
Okay.
I don't appreciate the comments, Mr. LaBosnier. You've got to vote just like maybe one of us has a vote over here.
I understand that, but they didn't get to vote.
That's true. It's our vote at this point in time. I don't appreciate the comments. I don't appreciate the comments.
All right, I apologize.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Reference three. Let's hope we don't have to go through each one like this. That's why maybe we just want to pick the ones we want to approve. But, all right, reference three.
Okay. I'll turn this one over to the listeners.
Okay.
The big change in number three, this is an amendment to 3.16, is it makes a very important change that currently requires that the, any, any change to an ordinance has to be printed in full. Any new or change to an ordinance has to be printed in full in one or more newspapers of general circulation. This will allow a summary. And it also requires in addition to the summary in the newspapers of general circulation, it requires in full on the town's official website and displayed in two or more locations in conspicuous fashion, which is typical. There are three sections that this comes up in with the town's ordinance, with the charter's ordinance section, which is 3.16. This would amend all three sections to essentially do that.
So this cuts down on advertising costs?
Yes.
But it does not remove any of the public notification? And they have access to read the entire ordinance?
That's right, on the website.
On the website.
And into conspicuous locations in town.
This is a good money-saving, I mean, this is a good idea.
Yes, and I think last time when it was on the ballot, it was misunderstood and not written properly. People did not understand, yes, because it was poorly written. People did not understand really what the meaning was behind it.
Correct, so, yes, that was one of town manager Hoover's great regrets is that that didn't pass.
Yes.
So, anyway, it's a good idea, so.
Make a motion to pass, second.
Motion to pass and second on recommendation number three. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Number three goes. Number four.
Number four, section 4.02 election. Currently reads, "At the general election to be held in November 1974, and every fourth year thereafter, three members shall be elected. The district shall be determined by the Board of Canvassers and Registration, and at the general election to be held in November 1976, and every fourth year thereafter, two members shall be elected from the remaining two districts, each for a term of four years." The new language added to this section would be, "Beginning with the general election to be held in November 2018, no member of the school committee shall serve more than two consecutive terms." The explanation given with this change is that it is believed the Charter Review Commission amended these sections of the charter to limit the number of consecutive terms to two, would allow more opportunities for and encourage more people to consider running for the school committee. A predictable change in the makeup of these elected bodies should bring in new energy, fresh ideas, and indifferent perspectives and points of view.
Okay, comments, Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I feel the same way on this one. They did the town council, I think, oh, nonpartisan elections covers this and I see no need to make it a charter review, I think.
Okay. I agree if we did it for town council, school committee, anybody wants more than eight years, God bless them. But to lock them out when you may not have anybody that wants to run, when so many are going uncontested in our state and our town. I'm not for either. Mr. LaBosnier? And I, Mrs. Stuxbury?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Those that wish to approve, recommendation number four.
Aye, aye.
Those again.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, number four out. Number five. Recommendation number five.
All right, I just amend section 4.10 forfeiture of office. Amendment or is it?
New section, new section.
Yes, old new section, excuse me.
That's all right.
A school committee member shall forfeit office if the member one lacks at any time during the term of office any qualifications for the office prescribed by this charter or by law. Two violates any express provision of this charter. Or three is convicted of a crime involving more moral interpretive. The explanation given with this new section is the CRC supports the idea, that would be the Charter Review Commission, the CRC supports the idea that both the offices of the town council members and school committee members should be treated equally by the charter. The proposed new section 4.10 adds forfeiture of office language to the Article Four School Committee. That is word for word the same as Article Three Town Council under section 3.04.
Okay, I like treating equally by the charter. Any comments on recommendation number five? Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes out. Number six.
Number six, section 5.01 Appointment Qualifications and Compensation. This is a change to existing language. It was originally amended in November 1976. Again, in November of 2008, with the effective dates of January 1st, 2009, and November of 2010. Am I reading that correctly? Section reads currently, "The town council shall appoint a town manager for his definite term and fix the manager's compensation. The town manager shall be chosen by the town council. The manager shall hold a master's degree in public administration, business administration, or related master's degree from an accredited college or university as the minimum degree for the appointment, together with these five years' actual experience." Previous language was as a, and it is now corrected to in a position of city, town, or county government. Previous language was manager or assistant manager, stringent to include just management. And finally concludes with, "The manager must maintain residency within the town of Coventry within six months of appointment." Explanation given for this change by the CRC is by redefining the requirements, an individual who has a strong background in other management functions within a town or city will qualify as a candidate.
Okay, comments?
I have a question.
Question.
So they still needed master's degree in public administration, business administration, or master's degree from an accredited college or university. So what kind of, I'm a little concerned about this because the person running our town needs to be somebody who has done something like this before. That's my opinion. It shouldn't just be someone that's been in a management position?
I think we just want to do the process of hiring our town manager. We're afforded to have good call by personnel. And I don't think, to me, it's lower than the standards. And I, you know, maybe some people that are in a different management position don't have the same credentials and the same qualifications as a town manager. I want nothing but the best for our town. And I don't think we should lower them. I think we should have to have the experience of a manager or a town manager.
Yes.
The last Charter Review Commission, that original change was we made those requirements much more stringent. And we made them where they, because that's what we wanted. We wanted the best qualified candidate without wiggle room other than, you know, below the particular standards. And again, I think the change in language would just open up to a little more interpretation. Just because someone is part of management doesn't necessarily mean they were part of supervisory management or.
Or working for the board.
Or had that talent.
Or company.
That's correct.
With that being said, I take a motion that we do not approve recommendation number six.
You don't have to do that because you, the charter just says you put those that go on which are approved. So if there's no motion to approve it.
So we're passing that?
We're passing over number recommendation six. Recommendation number seven.
Recommendation number seven coincides with section 7.04 of the existing charter, which is the written opinions and opinions expressed during town council meetings. It currently reads, "All written opinions of the town solicitor furnished to the town council, the town manager, and all departments, offices, and agencies of the town shall be filed with the town clerk and shall become the public record." The new language to be added to this section is, "All unwritten opinions of the solicitor expressed during any town council meeting shall be recorded in the town council meetings as such."
Minutes.
Oh, excuse me, minutes. The explanation from the Charter Review Commission is, "The recording of all unwritten opinions in the minutes of a meeting will permit anyone to reference what was said at a later date."
For what it's worth, I think this is a good addition. It's not vitally important, but there have been complaints for many years in Coventry that these phantom opinions appear out of nowhere and never really get written down. This would at least require that they be written down in the minutes. If I or any successor solicitor is called upon to give an opinion during a meeting, that the council acts upon, at least there will be some record of it. So it's a good idea. I realize we have.
How do we get them to do their opinions outside of meetings? I know you're very good about that, and I was looking to you to see what your reaction was.
Well, there are just some meetings where your, things come up and you have to opine on something, and it's very important, and the exigent circumstances do not allow you to write an opinion. You have to act that night. So for that reason, a lot of these opinions never get written down. This will ensure that they do at least in the minutes.
Well, I'm wondering how we go about making sure that there are written opinions when a solicitor is asked to opine on something outside of a meeting? Because I think we know that there's a lot of missing pieces. So I know that's not charter-driven, is it policy-driven?
Well, the charter does require that opinions of the solicitor furnished to town agents, it says now, those opinions shall be filed with the town clerk.
So those, in those times in the past, that that particular group of people may not have, they've been violating the charter. Whenever an opinion is not written and turned over to the town manager, it's a violation of the charter?
Yeah, yeah. There are past transgressions of the charter the way it's written now.
Agreed.
So, but this, and you're always going to have that, I think.
I think this is a good one.
LaBosnier pointed out, this is just during the town council meetings.
Right, I understand what I'm voting on. I'm just bringing up in public that there are times when opinions should have been in writing, that were never put in writing, that were not part of the meeting.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, I make a motion to pass this.
Well, that's a good comment to make, I'm pleased with that. Here again, I don't think, especially by solicitors, that it's a good idea. I'm all for it. But the fact that we're going to have our meetings videotaped in the near future, pretty much cover this. Everything's going to be on, you know.
You know, that's true, but the law right now, in some Supreme Court cases in Rhode Island, is that the minutes are the final record of what you did.
So it has to be translated.
It's totally counterintuitive in this age of digital recording, but the minutes are.
Are the body. Okay, we have a motion to accept then number seven.
I made a motion.
Motion again, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven passes. Number eight.
Number eight coincides with section 8.19, limits after adoption.
Sure.
I keep the genesis of this amendment. This amendment is to address an issue that's been raised by bond council that we dealt with. We tried to, when we do these capital leases, on the one hand, they are violative of this section. Even when the voters approve it at a financial town meeting, this section, the way it's written, is so broad that it has created tension in the way we do business when the voters have actually approved something. So this will eliminate that tension. It was written entirely by Karen Grande at Lock and Lord, who is our chief bond counsel. And so it's, it's just legalese, I'll read it. But what we're going to delete is, this is amendments to the budget after adoption. Limitations, referendum, approval by electors. We're going to take out the word referendum. We're going to take out the following language, capital improvement programs or projects not subject to the provisions of section 855 of the charter. That's, that's the bond approval section. "With an anticipated total cost for such program or project in excess of $100,000 shall not be initiated before referendum approval by the electors." We're going to cross out all of that and place instead in section 819, "Nothing in this section shall prevent the making of contracts or spending of money for capital improvement projects or other projects, provided that any payments from the town's general funds or property taxes must be approved annually by the electors at an annual or special financial town meeting. This section shall not apply to projects which have been approved by the electors in accordance with section 8.55 of this charter." So if the voters have approved it at the annual financial town meeting as part of the capital improvement budget or otherwise, we don't have to have a referendum. That's the effect of this section. It clarifies that.
So it's been approved by the voters, it just eliminates us from having to go back if we make a slight change to it and ask for second approval?
Correct.
And because it's also.
Yes.
Motion to accept, reference recommendation eight. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Recommendation nine.
Recommendation number nine strikes in its entirety.
It does, yes.
Personnel board. The personnel board, and the explanation given by the CRC, personnel board can be eliminated since there are many other means which allow for all functions defined in the current article nine.
I don't think there's any need to read this whole thing.
It would eliminate the personnel board. The law is that you have the right to be heard, to tell your side of the story before your, any action is taken on your plan. Right now, we have an elaborate system that requires a personnel board to be convened. It's very expensive. It was very contentious in the case of Westby Hoover, which recently prevailed, at least in the U.S. District Court. It's in the first circuit court of appeals right now. But the point is, it, we spent over $100,000 in that case on attorney's fees. This is before my time, just in front of the personnel board.
Now, ninety percent of our employees are covered by bargaining agreements.
Collective bargaining agreements. But even if they're not, they still have the right to be heard through, through federal law before any action can be taken. So you're not diminishing, in my opinion, the rights of the town's employees under federal law. You can't diminish that. You're just eliminating a very elaborate and, in my opinion, unnecessary system to carry out the same principle through the charter. I think it's unnecessary.
So my question then is, if you're telling me that we don't need this, but yet we still have to abide by giving the employees an opportunity?
Yes.
What are the avenues if it's not collective bargaining? Do we automatically form another personnel board when the incident occurs? Or how does that work? If you're telling me that they have the right, besides their collective bargaining agreement to be heard, then how would that might be when I?
I think, I think they still have that right under the charter, if I'm not mistaken. The town manager. They have the right to be heard, they have the right to present their position to the town manager. The right to tell their side of the story before action is taken. What they don't have, and remember one other important thing. Let's say that they, under the current charter, you indulge the full process that is required or allowed under the personnel review board. It's advisory only. It's only advisory to the town manager who can consider the personnel board's findings and reverse his or her decision. That's the most you get, is an advisory opinion from the personnel board. So it's, it's not really.
He has my decision, what you're saying, he just.
He still has the final decision, so.
Motion to accept this, I'm aye.
Elimination? Then we're not a section, entire section.
Second.
Right, motion is made and seconded. We confirm that it doesn't have to go by charter, the personnel board is the town manager? You're sure about that?
Yes, I am sure.
But then we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes out. Okay. Now, next, we have a recommended correction of Home Rule Charter, page 20. What are we talking about here?
I don't have anything else.
Yeah, you do. Page 20.
Page 20, 21 ballot, question number nine.
It was left off.
Okay, wait, but this is, okay.
Wait, hold something right there.
Let's make sure we're doing apples to apples here. Recommendation number nine, it looks like.
Well, not recommendation, ballot question number nine is a bad.
Right.
Apparently, questions that were already voted on by the voters, the entire language was not included in the articles. So we're trying to get the entire language. So it's already been voted on, so we just, we just got to need to include that in the articles.
So just so the public understands what we're trying to talk about here. It's a little misleading when we say ballot question number nine. We're talking about past ballot question number nine.
Already been voted on.
Which was addressed, I can't remember exactly the election, it was a previous election.
2010.
2010.
Okay.
2010.
Yes.
So it was approved, but the charter had never been updated to put the new language in the chart, right?
Include that last clause.
Right, so we just need to add that. We don't need to.
We don't need to take any action that just has to be added in the article.
What the, what the Charter Review Commission thought was that because the way the question passed, the way the question was written, and the way it was passed, this should be in the charter, and it's not. And it wasn't in the recommended change, but it wasn't the question, and the people did approve it.
Right.
So we need to.
We have the same.
Nine and 11.
Nine and 11. Right, so. I'll say for the record, this creates a bit of a quandary because, I mean, I think, I think the most important thing is that the people approved it. So I think we have to somewhere make note of that in the charter. So as a compromise, what the commission recommends is that you at least put in the charter, perhaps with a little asterisk, approved by people although not presented as a specific question to the people, because that's true, it wasn't. Do you understand that?
In the same situation with ballot.
So was it added to the language afterwards?
Well, it hasn't been, it hasn't been added to the language.
From the ballot. But it was, it was, but what was on the ballot, what was, is what the council moved towards the ballot.
There was a major discrepancy in 2010 about what was presented. Remember, these charter changes do not appear on the ballot. Later on, there will be a motion for the town manager and I to sit down and write the questions. Unfortunately, in the 2010 election, there was a, there was an inconsistency on two questions that went on the ballot. They did not have any basis at all in what was presented as a charter change. Yet the question asked something that was not part of the charter changes approved by the council. I don't know how that happened, because there was a huge discrepancy.
I wonder if that's the same year that six month thing.
So, well, there, you know, conspiracy theorists would have a field day with this.
Yes.
But all we're doing is trying to put in the charter, to memorialize in the charter, the people did approve what is under.
No matter how it got to the ballot, it got to the ballot and was approved on the ballot.
And now, what is the legal significance of you taking this vote? I think you're just putting in the charter, this is what the people approved. We realize the process was imperfect, but it was significant enough. The result was significant enough, i.e. the people approved it, that we want it in here. I would recommend that you have an asterisk that explains that.
Okay, so we need to take action on this?
You don't have to take action on.
But we want to make sure it gets in the charter.
If you want to make sure it's in the charter, do it.
Okay, and ballot question number 11 is the same situation?
Same situation.
So we could probably take both of them together.
Sure, ballot question 11 made a very, very significant reservation that the Charter Review Commission and some really good interested citizens discovered, who I think eventually became members of the Charter Review Commission. The key part of the question posed to the voters on the ballot question about whether to put the municipal court in the charter was that this body, the town council, would have the power to abolish the municipal court if the revenue did not sustain the operation of the court. That was not part of the charter change, but it was part of the question.
No, but it was, I have the, what was presented to the council, and that was in there. 11. 11 was in there.
All right, well, if it was in there, it didn't make it into the charter.
No, I agree, but I'm saying.
But the people approved it, which is, to me, the test stone for putting it in here. All right, they approved a question that asked that. So to me, that's the most important part. And this would also have to have an asterisk after it. And I think you can, you can leave that to the town manager and me to make sure that the asterisk is properly referenced in the genesis of this addition.
In all honesty, it was already, I mean, to me, just looking at it these years later, it looks like the language is incorrect because it was already governed by ordinance. And this was to amend it so it would be governed by charter as opposed to ordinance. and this was to amend it so it would be governed by charter, as opposed to ordinance. And it states ordinance right on the, instead of charter. So, is it correct?
Well, the bottom line is, it was on the ballots, they voted on it.
Voted on it, plus it should be reflected in the charter, the way it was approved by the voters.
So, how should we phrase the motion to, if we're going to vote on this, Nick?
You shouldn't comment before you pass out of the motion.
Motion should be to add to the charter text the recommendations phrased as ballot question number nine and number eleven in the Charter Review Commission's report, with an asterisk that explains its origin.
And do we mention that it was from the two thousand ten general election?
We'll do that, we will do that. The town manager and I will do that.
Okay. And number eleven is written in such a way that, if I'm reading it correctly, the council shall have the right to possess the power to abolish it.
Correct.
So, you come to a vote, to the current town council, wherever is it at that time, if it's not making money, whatever you want to say, because my feeling is, I don't want to touch baseball club, it was never designed to make money, I understand that.
That's not the message.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
People feel differently, I guess.
Well, it's, well, my question is, by us voting tonight, it will come in front of the council at a later...
Could.
It could, it shall, as it is the word, am I correct in saying that?
We can't change the wording, because it's already on the ballot.
Already been voted on.
Well, I'm not asking to change the wording, I'm asking for the comprehension, I understand that I'm what I'm voting on. I want to make sure that it's if we decide in the future, whether it be this council or a future council, that the court is not making money, that they will come in front of the council, as if it's worded, it shall abolish the court. Am I correct in saying that?
It shall possess the power.
Not shall abolish, it says the power.
The power to abolish.
If, if the council wanted to.
All right, that's my question.
It would be in the council's discretion to abolish.
But, to me, and looking at this, even though the people vote on this, it didn't change anything, because it was already governed by ordinance, and the whole idea of this was to make it governed by charter. And it states right here, it's operation governed by ordinance, so to me, it didn't change a thing. You know, if you really look at it, the way it was governed. Okay, so, but it needs to reflect it in the language of the charter, no matter how it is, because that's what they vote, so.
All right, I think...
So, I'll make the motion to include the wording that was expressed on ballot question two thousand, ballot question nine and eleven in the two thousand and ten election, include it in the charter with an asterisk, as the people approved.
To reflect the same language, right, that was used.
Right, to reflect the same language that was provided in the Charter Review Commission's report to this council. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
There's one other motion, which...
Recommendations for future?
Can I just ask one question before we move on? My question is, the Charter Review Commission put forth some policies for how we protect and safeguard the charter after all of these problems we had with that election, and I know the council approved it. Are those policies and procedures being followed?
I thought you adopted it in ordinance.
It wasn't in ordinance, I thought we took their policies and we had a resolution to adopt their policies, and that, I think, was before Mr. Waters. You looked confused, and that's why. I think it was when Mr. Permel was here.
Probably the two steps taken so far is the two that you just took, the ballot questions nine and eleven.
Right, I just want to make sure in the future that it doesn't get screwed up again, and that's why there were policies adopted.
I think those policies are being followed. They have to be followed through this big company that is sort of a feckless, baseless computer company called General Code Corporation. And we don't always know that they're going to do what we ask them to do, but...
Right, but if we at least are, Mr. Waters, maybe you can track down those policies, since you weren't here then.
Nancy's got it, she can give you those.
Ask Nancy Sullivan, she can give you the policies, I just want to make sure that they're being followed.
They vote on them, I think they changed the wording, because that's the wording.
Okay, so what was the next thing?
Oh, the next thing. Someone has to write the questions, because the way the charter reads, the, excuse me, I lost my section there.
Don't lose your section.
That's what happens, we don't have paper.
Oh, here we go. The, it shall not be necess, I'll just read to you the why I think we need to do something here, and it's in the notice under the OMA, so we're safe in doing this. It shall not be necessary for the full text of a charter or of a minimalist to the charter to be printed upon the ballot. Any digest or description thereof, or any question or statement which substantially expresses the purposes or identifies the subject matter to be voted upon shall be sufficient. The town council shall approve the statement of the question as it shall appear on the ballot. So, we have to prepare for you the questions that shall appear on the ballot, and then we're done. So, we can have that prepared for you very quickly, and you can vote on it at your next...
No, our next meeting is until the twenty-second. The ballots are ready the first week of August, I think.
Okay, well, then, we're going to have to do it sooner than that. Or, well, yeah.
Because what's the date for the ballot, is it like August seventh or something? Around the...
Well, we have to, yeah.
So, you're going to have to have a special meeting?
Yep.
We can't wait.
You're right, we can't, but we can, I thought we could do it in August, but you're right, we have to do it in a special meeting, but it'll be a very quick meeting, we can turn this around very quickly, getting it prepared.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
I was, the motion would be to ask the manager and the solicitor to prepare the questions. Because Mr. Jackson, to his credit, has done most of the work, this should be a pretty easy exercise.
Okay, you want to make that motion, Mr. Hill? Do we have the town manager and the town solicitor prepare the questions?
Prepare the questions. So, move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
I think it's that we have the eighth, they are printing, because don't they, then they send them back to the town for review, no? Or canisters?
Oh, special meeting.
Yeah.
This week's out.
Next one.
August first, it's Monday. I don't know.
August tenth is the latest, we can just, so next week should be good. Yeah, I wouldn't wait, I wouldn't wait, I would do like August first.
August first, August eighth, Monday.
You want us to sit there, or you want to let us know?
Do it.
Monday, August eighth.
I would be happy to do it on this morning, but...
Can you make the first, or can you have it done by then?
Yes.
It'll be August first.
You will be here August first.
It'll be August first, even the fifth.
Okay, why don't we, we all agree maybe August first, or, minus, this is ducking stranger things have happened.
Six thirty?
You don't want to wish anything on your closing. We're not closing.
Not going, everybody lives.
Well, August first.
All right, August first here.
Yes, fine, we'll make August first.
Tonight.
Special.
Well... Six o'clock, six thirty?
Six thirty, you ready for work?
Six thirty, yeah.
Six thirty.
Is that okay with you, Mr. McGee, working? Oh, you are?
August first is fine with me.
Six thirty?
Yep.
Special meeting. Okay. Where are we?
Oh, boy.
We are next on the agenda for discussion only, and, this is proposed ordinance.
We didn't have anything in our package.
There was nothing in our package, Bob.
Well, we did not have anything in our package.
Anybody else say that?
We did not have anything in our package.
At the level of specifics.
I will guess.
I didn't have anything in your package.
I will, if you all recall, there's a member of the public who came up, a couple council meetings ago, a very public comment to talk about, I guess, an idea to expand into the town of fence ordinance, to help regulate the construction of fences in town. And Council Wynduggsberry got in touch with me, said I'd like to have this discussed with council meeting, and I'll turn it over to Council Wynduggsberry. I'll just note that I've had our town solicitor, and I also have our assistant planning director here, if there are technical questions about state law.
Okay, and I unfortunately wasn't at that meeting, because I think I was on a state, but what I understand is that state law dictates where fences are put, unless the town puts more than ordinance. And I believe the state law says it's on the property line.
It can be, it can be on the property line, and those are old state laws from the agrarian era of Rhode Island, when fences mattered and placement of them on boundary lines was to begin to get more grass.
At your property house.
You're going to have to get a fence view, you know.
So, what this constituent has asked me to do was to bring forth the possibility of putting a fence ordinance in place that will perhaps at least get people, neighbors, talking to one another before a fence just goes up, and then maybe is on the wrong property line, or, and so I told this constituent that I would be happy to bring it up. I do like Mr. Waters' suggestion that the council discuss these things before we spend the time, the effort to put an ordinance together that may not ever get passed, but there were some examples that Mr., I think it was Mr. DiCubellis that put forth that suggestion. He did a lot of research on it, he did, I think, pass along some suggestions, maybe even other model ordinances, but it allows the neighbors to start talking about the process if they have a dispute what the process would be, and I think it's probably a good idea, but I'm obviously not going to be there to pass it along. So, I just wanted to bring that up before the council and see if there was a flavor of whether you were for or against even looking at that issue for Mr. DiCubellis and other. I do think it has some warrant, that we probably want to talk about it, more particularly in the areas where you have a half acre lots, one acre lots, and it also probably would address natural fences, and who takes care of the fence, who maintains it, does it get trimmed? So, I'm throwing that out there because a constituent asked me to present it in. That's it.
If there is further consideration by the council, there'd also have to be a rest existing fences that are in town, if they were being grandfathered.
I would think it'd have to be grandfathered.
For what it's worth, if you look at the zoning enabling act, and you look up a structure...
A fence is a structure.
A fence is a structure, which that means it could be subject to the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance, because it is a structure. So, that creates a real quandary for a lot of fences, because they're probably potentially illegal under the zoning ordinance, because they're not, the whole point of a fence is it's not setback, it's near the line a lot of the time. So, you might want to ask the planning department to weigh in on this, and...
Should I not vote in?
Maybe that's right.
Don't research first.
Well, we're in the fair, I have to do this research.
Yeah, good.
Matt, come on up to the voting.
Well, we'll take a vote today.
We're ready, this council, yeah.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. So, I wasn't given a lot of direction. You know, our zoning ordinance right now only kind of dictates height in different zones, and specifically rear, rear and side yard setback versus front yards. They could require pools, but it's only some pools, I believe, so I think if you sort of structure and you start investing with fences and setbacks, it could get pretty difficult, I think. I know in other, some other towns, they actually require a building permit for a fence over a certain height, so that could be something to consider, but that's not my problem.
Did you say we have a height requirement now for fences?
It's a restriction.
Excuse me?
A restriction.
A restriction.
So, you say we have one, or you do?
We do.
For height, not for any distance.
Right, I understand height, but what, could I ask what that is?
So, it depends on the zone you're in.
The zone you're in.
Industrial, it's up to ten feet.
Okay.
Commercial, it's up to eight, and residential, in the rear and side, it's six, but in front of the house is four.
Got it. Okay, you have done some research.
Good job, Matt.
Good job.
So, I think, I don't know, I, my feeling on it is, you would hope that people talk about these things, if you're neighbors, but that doesn't happen. And, you know, maybe perhaps being able to have something that provides a way for neighbors to solve disputes, you know, if the...
Call fences.
Yes, fence offenses.
But fences make good neighbors. I have very much empathy toward a fence, you need to do enough room in the neighbor's property so you can walk back there and maintain it, and whether it's two feet, one feet, I mean, I'm all set for something like that, but if it involves setbacks, you know, that could definitely be a mess. I'd have to see some, you know, model ordinances, maybe from other towns who may have these ordinances.
Potentially, I'm just thinking kind of off the head, off the head right now would be to consider accessory structure, because those actually have some closer setbacks, but that...
We have time, I guess. Thank you.
So, would there be another step, maybe you would just, just so I can report back to my constituent, if the council is interested in discussing that a little further, or, obviously...
Would that be something to refer to the planning commission, to have them, is that something that they might look into?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think to give a suggestion of whether we really do need to amend the ordinance.
I just want to have a little follow-up, because I'm not going to be here to keep asking you questions, so, did this, am I going to send this constituent an email, and if I can just say that it's going to be referred somewhere, at least it just doesn't come up and then drops off the basie here. So, could we refer it to someone to look at?
Matt, at the next planning commission meeting, have them take up the consideration of a fence ordinance to have a recommendation brought before the town council's head.
Yeah, or just, maybe they could make a recommendation on the town council, whether there needs to be an ordinance, and if so, what it should be.
Right. Exactly it.
Back, you can go ahead to the planning commission first.
The next meeting is Wednesday, so it'd probably be the August...
Okay, and do you have the stuff from Mr. DiCubellis, did I forward that on to you?
Yes.
Okay, so you have his suggestion. All right, great, thank you.
I'll bring it up.
Okay, I think that brings us down to poll, public comment, at this time, public comment, public comment. Yes, way in the back first, working towards the front.
Good evening. Monica Lorman, thirty-one Elton Street.
Can you say your name again, please?
Monica Lorman. On April twenty-eighth, Town Manager Waters sent an email to Paul Sprague stating that he needs some information, quote, "For Wendy O'Normans and Mr. Lawrence, rare that ugly heads," unquote. Mr. Waters then forwarded this email to my wife, Stacy O'Norman. I feel this was very unprofessional. If it was forwarded accidentally, it's not excused, it would basically mean that he was writing negative things behind the backs of taxpayers instead of addressing their concerns. Mr. Waters started the job in February, and within two months, he was sending out nasty emails to taxpayers rather than addressing their issues. I'm sure that we're not the only ones that he's written negative comments about with his town email address. As a taxpayer in commentary, I deserve to have my voice heard without the fear of negative and abusive comments directed to me, and in particular, my family, by the town manager and any other town official for that matter. Mr. Waters, I'm sorry that you're annoyed by the emails that we've sent you, but we've been referred to the town manager by Glenn Shibley with basic...
been referred to the town manager by Glenn Shively with basically every issue we've had in District 4 over the last couple of years, so that's why we've been emailing you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, several.
Okay, so, um...
Name and address, please, in the record.
Nancy Sullivan, 6 YO Court.
Thank you.
So Tammy had mentioned in regards to the protocol for the amendments to the charter, which all came out from the Citizens Advisory Committee, Donald O'Currie Beck. So just for your refresher, I do have the taffies, which I will give to each one of you. Here you go. Yep, here you go. There. Okay, so, most of those have already been followed by Ken's presentation to the town council, giving you the packet that listed the CRC members, the given minutes, so on and so forth. So a lot of those have already been followed. It's from here on out that really needs to be buttoned up as far as every detail adhere to, because therein lies the problem with District 5 seat, with the nine and 11 ballot questions. So it's a, it's a system of checks and balances that we came up with, of having people sign off that this was a draft, that this is what we sent, and it came back word for word, signed it off, and then we keep copies of all of those things that were signed off. So when, in the event, God help us, if there is another error that causes some sort of issue with the Home Rule Charter, we can actually go back and, and trace it, and to see where it was in, oh, wait a minute, it was E code's issue, not ours, or whatever. Okay, so that's, that's what that was. So I, I, again, thank you for all your consideration for the proposed amendments. I at this time would also like to publicly express my sincere thanks to Tammy Duxbury for her dedication to the residents of District 5. I do not think that this district has been, ever been in better hands. Tammy has authored ordinances that have changed the quality of the lives for the residents of District 5. Tammy is intelligent and sensible, and was determined to make a change to the town of Coventry, and she was true to her word. She did make a change to the town of Coventry. Although she represent, she represented District 5, she always had the best interest of all Coventry in her heart and in her actions. To say she will be missed is an understatement. I know we're not allowed to address council members individually, but please allow me to say, Tammy, thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, I would also encourage this council to allow the voters to decide who will be the next District 5 councilperson to fill the vacancy. Let the voters decide who will be the best to continue fighting the issues that plague District 5. Let the voters choose who has the knowledge, the understanding, the same determination that Tammy has brought to District 5. This is what the voters vote fought for in the previous situation when District 5 seat was failed. We deserved it then, we deserve it now. Please, let the voters decide who will have the District 5.
Thank you. Yes, another comment? Mr. Jackson?
Yeah. Jackson, 2799I, he helped. I have some concern, speaking of the citizen advisory, when we can expect to get that going again, you know? Took 10 years to get that thing even formed, 10 years. I know we've got a very hot subject right now, and it's an election year, and that's fine, but this team, as you have seen, put together comprehensive reports for you. I just would urge you to get it going again, please.
Absolutely, in fact, I have two assignments for you. I'm waiting for the final report from the Citizens Advisory Committee, which I have yet to receive. So as I recall from the last meeting, the report was gonna be given to me, for me to present to the council at some point in the future, and I've yet to receive that report. But because there is no real rush, I'd not wish it, but I'd sort of wish it in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts, too, on the Charter Review Board. Any other comments tonight? Public comments? Public comments? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, have a good night.